The Board will come to order at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Board of Education this afternoon. Mr. Matthews, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the agenda as presented with a modification to meet an executive session following the regular meeting to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues, and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code articles, Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, action item, FY 2014, FY 2015 budget, Dr. Marterano.
Let's make sure that's on.
Good afternoon.
And thank you for making certain that we're able to have this meeting this afternoon. Keep in mind that we're operating under a very compressed budget schedule this year as we are developing our operating budget for FY 15. We are still addressing the issues in FY 14. And so needing to throw and develop additional meetings into the schedule becomes critical as we're moving very fast. And then we had the combination of all the snow days combined with our spring break. So we have been working diligently, nonstop, to address the issues in fiscal year 14 as well as come forward with you on April 30th to further address the ongoing development of FY 15. And so first and foremost, I want to introduce officially to you Ms. Tammy McCourt, our new Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services, recognizing that I've shared a communication with you since our last meeting that Mr. Greg Norris has accelerated his retirement to deal with some issues with his father who is terminally ill. So Mr. Norris is no longer a part of the organization. Additionally, my thoughts and prayers go out to Mr. Scott Smith, who lost his father today as well. And so our organization recognizing that this is made up of people, that we're a very sensitive-driven organization in terms of the concerns for our folk as we are addressing the issues. At the same time, we want people to take care of themselves and then the issues of life that are occurring as well. So as I continue to define the issue, I wanted to start with the quote, "Communicate, communicate, communicate, and when in doubt, communicate more." As you know, we have a very robust communication plan in our school system. We address with full level of transparency our issues. And we, when encountering a problem, we expose that problem and we need to address it. And what I use the expression, how we mitigate that and to address it in terms of further years as well. So let me get into the details, recognizing that I've defined to you at our last meeting with a very high level of detail where we are with our FY 14. And I've been expressing this to you for the last several months. When Ms. McCourt came on board, she did a very detailed audit of the budget and recognized that in February, towards the latter part of February, that we were beginning to have the issues of emergence with our health care issues. She immediately let me know that at the beginning of March, and that's when I began those communications with all of you to let you know what we were putting in place to mitigate that, to offset it through any freezes, et cetera, and I'll get into that in detail as well. The issue is in terms of understanding how we've got here. This has been a real aberration, as I've said. I used that word multiple times in our last presentation. As you know, we are experiencing a higher level than planned on costs in the associated areas this year of utilities, snow removal, and special education and health care. I spent time with you going through all of those last time. In a normal circumstance, through freezes, et cetera, we would deal with the utilities and the snow removal, special education, and all other overages as part of our May categorical. It's not unusual when you set your funds in your accounts that things don't always play out in the exact amount. And so therefore, the May categorical, recognizing we may not have the funds or resources to cover, we would deal with that through the process of what we've put in place. So to kind of review for you where we were, where we are, this year, the utilities and the funding expenditure shortfall is about $500,000. Weather-related costs, another $150,000. Special education, again, I went into great detail with you last time about this. What I'm defining is contracted therapists and contracted services provider. Again, we cannot turn away individuals who come into our school system who have needs, particularly when I talked about the IEP carriers, Individual Educational Plans. And we budget a certain amount for that, but if the young people come, we have to provide services by law, or there's another pressure point in terms of not being in compliance and that has a legal bearing force. So if I were to take all of those and isolate those in the aggregate, that would be for a total of about 1.25 million, and again, would be covered as a result of the freezes that I imposed immediately and through other cuts that we've done through the budget to FY 14 and adjustments in the categorical transfer. So we're going to spend a little more level of detail regarding the health care today. And then my main goal is, you know, the solutions. You know, it's interesting that, you know, this issue continues to roll out, and I've been very clear with the communications to all of you, but yet I've said with a level of precision that the numbers are not precise because the school year still has two months left in terms of the fiscal year. So those who are asking for a specific number, we're doing that based upon our projections, but also, as I've defined, with a very clear sense of authority and clarity that here's where we are and here's where our challenges have become with usage of health care, et cetera. We still have two months of bills that need to be tended to that I can't predict with any level of authority what those are going to reconcile out. But what I do want to say to you is that with the total of the 1.25 million that will be covered by the freezes and cuts in the FY budget and adjusted in the categorical transfer, we can cover a certain amount of that. And then there will be a portion of that that can be covered as well for the health care. And the ultimate issue is, you obviously have worked with me a number of years, recognizing that I like to have a problem when it's presented to us and a solution in hand. So typically, when you have an organizational structure at the size of ours at an operating budget of approximately $190 million, good fiscal management will say that you should have a healthy level of reserves to cover those offsetting amounts. And for people to say that that's not true, they're completely wrong. You have to have a healthy level of reserves to deal with the unexpected costs. So as we are trying to tend to a number of different issues and priorities, such as fund OPEB, such as tend to the health care, we budget a certain amount based upon all that to make all those pieces work and expect with a level of precision that it works out. But when we're at that level of razor-thin level with the lack of fund balance or reserves, I only have so many other options to execute. And that is to execute freezes on the current spending to account for any savings, to build a savings through the budgetary process. Same way individuals budget in their home budget. If you budget for a certain amount in terms of your weekly expenditures, if you need more money, you cut back in other areas. And so through that process, commonsensically approaching it to the same level of that. So there's going to be a level of detail today that we're going to go into. We've allocated about 90 minutes. I'm going to present that level of health care. I'm going to ask Tammy, Ms. McCourt, to come up and present the level of detail regarding the health care at that level of detail. And then I have three options for you to consider in terms of what I've proposed as solutions to the problem and how we will solve FY 14. Now, I'm a very optimistic person, as you know, and so as we are doing the adjustments for 14, we are also diligently dealing with 15 so that we can stabilize and equalize for next year in the very volatile arena of health care. And for folks to say that it's not a volatile arena, they're wrong as well. We talk about sustainability. We talk about the need for, you know, the health care and how it's driving all organizations in America. We need to look at those realities, where those areas come from, and how we address it, and how we continue to look at our own increases in our conversations with Care First and the conversations that need to occur within our own management of individual usage as well. So in summary, from the last time, as I kind of pick up where I left off from the last time, is a review. You recognize that I had said that we have an increased enrollment of 77 employees for a total of 279 members. It's unexpected. Estimated cost of $926,000. Increased prescription usage in comparison to last year at this time, that's a truism. $1.9 million. And again, 75% of our usage is for brand drugs. More health care cases reaching over 200,000, coverage limitations resulted in increase of $500,000. Planned-on savings, and Tammy will get into this in more detail, planned-on savings of $2 million based upon a historical insurance settlement reimbursement reflective in the budget as adopted. And if the health care recommendation, if the Care First recommendation premium of an increase of 11.82 had been implemented, but because of the result of some decision-making that all of us engaged in, that we stated that we thought we were going to get some additional savings based upon some adjustments that we've made to the other plans, that would have resulted in $2.2 million of additional revenues and not enough to cover the other shortfalls. But why I say that, that's a critical decision-making and balancing all the other issues, is that historically, we've increased our rates, but again, that's passed on to the employees and retirees at a percentage. And so you balance that out in terms of your raises and your savings and other parts of the budget, make calculated decisions, so that any raises you're giving your employees is not eaten up by additional increases in fees that are coming in other ways. I clearly defined next year the Affordable Care Act, you know, that additional fee there and how that plays out. All of these are real factors. They're not fake. They're real. They're discussed in public. They're conversations that need to be addressed and need to be addressed and dealt with in a non-sarcastic manner. Total prescription increase, I told you, by the total number of fills and brands increased. While there was 1380, generic fills decreased by 151. That's a real issue. And again, I bring up the conversation I brought up over and over with this Board. Copays are at five and 10 with only brand and generics available. The current plan is two-tiered and does not include a non-formulary option. That option provides for brand drugs when generics are not available. And I went through all of this as well, just to provide education for people who need that level of detail and education, the reality of what it takes to manage health care. I talked about the aspect of what it means to be self-insured. I mean, that's a real issue. We pay coming and going, left and right, directly and indirectly. So that we're paying 80% and 20%. Employees pay 20%. The school system picks up the 80%. And those variables, again, are fluid. They're dynamic. They're not static. You don't put it in a ledger sheet and say, "This is what it's going to be." It's going to ebb and flow because we're dealing with people and we're dealing with real issues in terms of medical issues. So I wanted to take you back to some specific pages within our budget. Page 41 of our operating budget that was adopted by the Board, page 41, and then page 35 of the recommended operating budget for 15 that delineates all the numbers very clearly and a rationale for why those exist and where we are. So I'm going to ask Tammy to come up at this moment to provide the level of detail necessary for those, and then I will join momentarily after that.
So in developing the 2014 budget, the assumption was that the fiscal services utilize, going back to 2012, the $18 million as a basis. So in 2013, we knew that we were going to be changing to a planned triple-option plan, and with that, we were estimating, based on information provided by Care First, a $2 million savings. Historically, we had received approximately $2 million settlement, reconciliation settlements from Care First. We also factored that into 2013. So that 2013 number of $14 million was the basis for developing the 2014 number for the adopted budget that you see on page 35 and your adopted, actually in the FY 2015 recommended budgets. We added $2 million to get to the $16 million as a basis for 2014. Going into 2015, with the shortfall that we're recognizing this year of between 5.8 and $6.5 million, we're looking at now needing approximately $25.3 million for the 2015 budget. Please understand that the range of 5.8 to $6.5 million, we're providing that range as an estimate. I'm in daily conversation with Care First to project that out, but we don't know the exact number until the fiscal year is ended because as Dr. Marterano indicated, we've still got two more months of bills coming in. The health insurance costs are extremely volatile. I mean, one week it might be $400,000, another week we may have a cost of $800,000. So we're carefully monitoring that. What needs to be understood, though, is however, the insurance provider projected costs, the cost that the Care First is actually providing us in March of every year is only the number for fiscal year 2014 was $33.5 million. However, that's not the number that you actually see in your budget document. That number is funded via Board appropriations, it's funded via employee contributions, and retiree contributions. The Board contributions, then, are funded via appropriations from the General Fund, from the Grant Fund, from the Food Services Fund, and from Chesapeake Charter School. The employee and retiree contributions are based on negotiations, and those contributions, as you see on the screen, can range from 90% for HMO for a full-time employee to 45% contribution on behalf of the Board for part-time employees. All of those factors are taken in consideration. So just to reiterate, the local appropriation is not set simply based on the cost projection provided by the provider. It's a highly detailed, highly complex calculation that takes into consideration the number of employees, what plan the employees have signed up for, whether it be HMO, triple-option, or PPO, which plan level they've signed up for, whether it be individual, parent-child, husband-wife, or family plan, and the contribution percentage rate as set by the negotiated agreements, and the estimated amounts to be covered by the other plans. So for example, we need to know exactly how many individuals will be signing up under the HMO plan at the individual level for a cost of $478 a month versus under the PPO plan at a family level of $1,813. We have to estimate these out a year and a half in advance. The chart that you see on the screen here are only the premium rates for our active employees, then we have a whole nother set of calculations that are utilized to set the premium rates for the retiree calculations. Dr. Marterano?
So Board members, to review from the last time, when this issue was revealed to me at the end of February, beginning of March, we imposed an immediate freeze on all hiring. We evaluated temporary positions and eliminated all non-essential positions. I stated Cabinet will review all requisitions and approve all only emergencies. Cabinet will only approve what is called pre-please-pay. Those are issues in terms of our accounts that we have at various vendors. No conference attendance, which we have minimal to begin with unless they're grant-funded, and preapproval from Cabinet. So we have to cut those back considerable. We've minimized all overtime and the encouragement of use of Board vehicles for travel in and out of the county and minimized travel reimbursements as far as use of personal vehicles. So the reality is, we've been presented with a problem. We have resolved to examine that problem, to mitigate in any way that we can, and again, not just looking at it with myopic vision, but with long-range vision in terms of anything that we do in 14 will have a bearing in 15. So that we're not just looking short-term, we're looking long-term as well and recalibrating. So I have three options in terms of solutions for the overall issue for 14 because we need to get on to 15 and resolve that. In our current budget, if we're looking at a shortfall as defined, through all of our actions, here's what we think can happen, that if we utilize our health care reserve, which is designated for that purpose only, to $1 million, utilize our existing $2 million fund balance. And again, when I talk about razor-thin, I recognize $2 million appears to be a lot of money in terms of budgets, but for a large budget, that's razor-thin. I need to remind folk of that. As I stated, actuarial recommendations, a budget our size, is based upon 5% of the operating budget. Do your quick math, $190 million, that's $8.5 million. And we're nowhere near that. We've been talking about this for recent years. So that when we have a problem, in the past, when we had a more robust reserve, and we've had these swings before, we would say, "We have a problem and a solution in hand," because we would address it in the categorical. The reason why this is more dramatic and apparent is because those internal solutions don't exist for reserves. So utilizing the $3 million, and then through all the other compilation, that constellation of actions that I talked about, executing frees, actions taken in FY budget, requests Board of County Commissioners take action, the Board of County BOE Categorical Transfer request of $2.3 to $3 million. We feel through those actions that we've done to save, to freeze, to put holds on accounts, that will yield between $2.3 and $3 million. So if you add all those up, we feel that using all those funds, we can solve the problem internally. But it's tight. So we dedicate all future budgetary savings in 15, now I'm going to talk about, to build both a health care reserve and a three-month reserve for cash flow and best fiscal management practice to allow the school system to address unforeseen events and emergency situations next year. Because what we do is we deplete, as Mrs. Allen has asked the question, about once we deplete the health care reserve, we can't operate with zero there. So I'm already envisioning the actions that needed that I'll have to execute July 1 in 15 is to impose a level of restriction on accounts to build in savings if there's any freezes, et cetera, lapsed salaries, that we start moving those dollars in to replenish that amount. So I want you to think now and long-term. So through this action, we would be able to solve the problem internally. That's option one. The only other conversation we've been having with the leadership of the county, and I want to publicly thank Ms. Elaine Kramer, who has been very supportive in this process. There's been great collaboration between county government and school system to solve this, that we would need to allocate our distribution from the county, move it up to May 15th, because we have a cash flow consideration that we have to contend with. See, another piece of mythology is, is that the allocation from the county, whatever that allocation is, is not allocated in one amount. That's distributed throughout the year on a bimonthly basis. So of course, state does the same thing, county does it, and the little bit of interest in terms of our interest rates are low, those individuals are going to gain from that. They build that into their budget, same way that we do as well. So we need to accelerate our cash flow, but I want to say, option one allows us to solve the problem internally based upon the actions that we've already implemented in a very swift manner. But there's inherent risks. So a new set of phrases I'm using today, inherent risk. Any action, for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction, and there's inherent risks in this. That there's no fund balance to support the cash flow in FY 15. That has to be addressed. So I talked about how we would begin to reposition and move dollars based upon a savings that would have to be implemented immediately. Need to have allotments accelerated in 14 and 15 based upon what I just talked about, the cash flow, how we would accelerate that for that first month of July and August. There would be no health care reserves immediately available for future calls, but recognizing that that doesn't get reconciled until the end of that cycle, that I have to say with a level of confidence that through those actions, we would be able to hopefully replenish that by the end of the year. And that depletes any fund balance for any emergency events, health care year-end unidentified, if we are unable to generate through those intended cuts in FY 15 to replenish a fund balance. We do not have the luxury of those reserves in terms of good fiscal management to deal with those swings, and I'm pushing that to the edge. And again, it makes the consideration that there would be no contribution to OPEB. We've been very aggressive as a county, as a school district, to make those requests and contributions to OPEB were to the tune of almost $30 million in that trust fund account that we've been dealing with over the last several years. So remember that as a variable in all of this, that dollars have been allocated with no additional dollars presented for that in the overall process. It's in many ways an unfunded mandate that has to be addressed by local, state to deal with that. That is to fund the organization for individuals in an organization that offer post-employment benefits. So in the nutshell, simple terms, we have retirees. In order to provide those benefits, it's building a trust fund to sustain that offering because of the rising health care costs. So that's option one. Option two, would be utilize the health care reserve to the tune of $1 million, utilize unassigned fund balances of $1 million. I said two in the other one. Continue the same execution that I stated before as far as the categorical by executing the changes in the savings. We would do that through a categorical transfer process, a normal process through the county. We would have to therefore request a loan from the county to borrow from their fund balance, and it's a matter of how you slice this. So I want you to be very clear. I've given you the first option that saves it internally based upon our own dollars, and I'm pleased about that. I want to commend everybody who's contributed to this. But are we taking ourselves too close that we would then seek a loan or supplemental appropriation from the county from their fund balance to the tune of 1.0 to 1.7? And again, the unpredictable variable there is, please take away this understanding April, May, and June. They have not been reconciled or reported yet. So we have to keep that in mind. And again, you know, continuing some of the same language you're going to see, again, requesting the county distribution schedule in June to be provided by May 15th, and then dedicate all future budgetary savings to build back up those accounts overall. But again, I'm going to say again, in 14, this is keeping everybody whole. There's been no furloughs. There's been no cuts to staff. The instructional program remains intact. The performance still continues to be at a high level for our young people. The results are phenomenal as we prepare for graduation. And we've tried to keep all of this away from our schools in terms of that. I might add today to the principals who are watching this being streamed, hello to you. Continue the great work that you're doing. We are streaming this live to our principals and administrators in our schools today. So again, dedicate all those savings to those emergency situations that we would have. I talked about that. Inherent risks. Little fund balance to support cash flow in FY 15 to the tune of $1 million. Again, same metrics, same analytics, just adjustments of those numbers. Need to have allotments accelerated in 14 and 15, no health care reserves, and no contributions to OPEB. That's two. Option three, taking that same analytic algorithm model, utilize health care reserve zero of our own. Utilize unassigned fund balance zero. Same logic regarding the savings is to tune to 2.3, 3.0 to a categorical, but then a request from the county via a loan or supplemental appropriation by June 15th, 3 to 3.7. So you just see the adjustments based upon the utilization of the fund balance versus then how much we would request. Request county distribution scheduled by May 15th, and then dedicate all future budgetary savings to building both a health care reserve and a three-month reserve for cash flow and best fiscal management practices to allow the school system to address unforeseen events and emergency situations. and emergency situations. So that's option three. The positive outcomes on that are that we maintain our current healthcare reserve, that we maintain our current fund balance as FY 14, our risks are mitigated regarding cash flow regarding that, and again, I've stated, cash flow is improved overall. So again, I said to you that you can't look at just 14 alone. You have to define what are the events that contributed to 14 to bring us to where we are? How do we mitigate and solve it? And as stated, operating with a level of precision, I presented three options to you to solve it. One, internally. Two, with adjusting the metrics. And three, adjusting further depending upon that conversation. And then how do we carry that forward and what we need to do in 15? Because this has been a proverbial conversation with this board throughout the budget cycles for the last nine years, the conversations about healthcare. So we know for a fact that we're going to have to increase the group rates. To what level right now? I can't say, because we are basing that upon Care First proposal that will be communicated to our Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services in the near future. We are in conversation with them literally as we speak, phone calls are in today. They operate with a level of precision, and we have the history in terms of what we've done over the past years. That we add an additional, as we're balancing the 15 budget, that as we think about the new monies, now I am drifting way into 15 now, as we think about the new monies that have been allocated for 15, that we acknowledge that we're going to have to increase 6.5 million of funding to cover anticipated healthcare costs. Ms. McCourt has just defined that for you, what we need to do to sustain, to sustain. We also know that I'll be discussing further, that we're going to have to make further adjustments in our staffing pattern. Remember, two years ago, three years ago, fiscal year 12, I recommended that we eliminate 57 administrative positions. We did, and those positions have never returned to the school system. There were other positions that we were having conversations about at that time that would have to be examined as well. And during the conversations on the 30th, when we gathered to talk further at our work session about that, I have a very detailed plan about how that will look and feel as well in terms of adjustments for our staffing. But the reality is, there will be no new positions in next year's budget. Anything that we cut, we will make the balance to cover at least three positions needed to open the new Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School in September, August of 15, school year 15. So keep in mind that we're looking at all the variables in motion, not just myopically. That the biggest variable that this whole plan is predicated on is realizing, one, the savings that we've executed already, and then carrying that plan of savings and cuts and freezes forward in fiscal year 15. So with a level of precision, the conversations with Ms. McCourt and Mr. Clements, our deputy, acknowledging where we have to adjust our loading of our individual counts, so our calibrations, to yield upfront those savings, to replenish the healthcare reserve as well as the fund balance reserve, to operate within that level of fiscal responsibility. And again, establish a healthcare reserve to cover the possible shortfall via immediate plan budgetary replenishment. I just talked about that. There's been conversation about this, and you know, this is, there's two different ways to get to the end line. And there's been conversations about the, you know, we budget a certain way, and at the end of the year, we have a reserve. And then with a level of precision, we've had great conversation vetted publicly about paying as we go, you know, in the sense of paying those bills as we go, budgeting a certain amount. So with a level of precision at the end, that would zero out. So we have gone to that level in the past and frees, and free up monies to do it with other parts of the school system budget. But through the recommendation, the school system will be returning to a modified retrospective healthcare structure, which is going back to that allocation of the funding upfront, and then deal with a reconciliation at the end, which may have a reserve at the end, you know, in that sense. So moving to that is a recommendation. The school system will be implementing a premium as recommended by Care First, I'd already stated that, and we are in the process of getting that in terms of where that would be. I think our highest, do you remember off the top of your head over the last five years, I believe was 15, somewhere in there, in that realm? I can provide you with that history, with where that is. And then what that breaks out to, you know, so when you say a 15% increase, but you have to realize what that breaks out to be per individual over the course of the number of times we deduct that. So I want to show you that in real, live dollars, how that pertains. We haven't done that level of detail, because it's a different analytic when you look at it that way. The percentage seems large, but you have to ask the question, 15% of what in terms of that increase? And then future refunds from Care First would be utilized to reestablish the healthcare reserve. I keep saying that over and over. And again, what I'm saying here too, is that begin the process of reestablishing a model of fund balance that would be held to support cash flow. We need to reconvene our healthcare committee to discuss healthcare savings to include co-pays and pharmaceutical plans. I've had great conversation with our union reps and our association reps regarding this, where we are with our co-pays. I was very clear about the level of where we are. And then the whole fact of negotiate healthcare prescription co-pay increases, you know, this ties right into that with the tandem. So board members, that brings me to the end of the overall presentation. I'm asking today that for the approval of the recommended options to resolve the FY 14 budgetary issues, to submit to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration, because we have to be able to go to them, as we always do through the categorical transfer process, through the processes defined, to define where our problems are and how we solve them. And then as I've given you options, one, solves it internally with a solution in hand, but there are inherent risks in each one of those, and how we address those, how we got there, I think is very clear. So my goal today was to be a consummate teacher, in the sense of defining with a beginning and a middle and an end, the continuation of the last lesson where we were on this, and then to fully understand where we are, where we were, and where we're going to solve this problem. So I thank you for your attention. I want to publicly thank Ms. McCourt, our Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services, for her guidance and diligence to this, as well as to Mr. Clements, our Deputy Superintendent, who have spent more time with me in my office than they would want to over the last two months. So I just have to say that in that sense. So thank you, board members. To you.
Thank you, Dr. Mariano. I think the plan is a great plan as we go through these options. Board members, questions or comments about this information presentation? Mrs. Crosby?
Yeah, do we select all three options or just one of them?
I understand very clearly, I am presenting three options to solve the problem.
Yes.
I'm asking the board to adopt all three options, to take further to the Board of County Commissioners for conversation. This has got to be a collaborative process.
That's what I thought.
Because we do not have the reserves at the level to solve it at that level, and for the years, we've been cutting that back. So I'm presenting very clearly defined options to solve the problem. Each one has a risk with it.
Yeah. I read your letter that just came in to Jack Russell.
Correct.
I have been in contact with Jack Russell because he contacted me.
Good.
He said, it's the board's problem. Just that kind of gives you an idea where one of them stands. Now, Elaine Kramer is one of the smartest, most honest people you can ever meet, and I think it's wonderful that we're working together with Ms. McCourt, and you'll enjoy that. And I thank you too for getting back to me with my question about what would be the estimated cost for FY 14 and FY 15. Now, here's why I ask that. I knew over a month ago that we were over $5 million in the hole, and that's not good. It was out in the community. Someone called me and told me. I called Mr. Norris, and he said, we were 5.8 to 6.2 million. Now, I would really, as far as that 25 million went, I got a call on that too. And I thought, I was told that because we've been dealing with CARE for so long, and they really know what they are doing, that they can make a good estimate. Alls I would like to have is, I'd like to be, as a board member, the first to know. Because when these community members, and they're right, they have the correct, it's almost like they're working here somewhere, and they give us this information, it's embarrassing.
Well, let me address that. I mean, I've, the board has been informed.
But it's correct information that I'm...
Because it's in the budget book. It's public domain information. You can refer to the pages in the book, so that, it's not like it's a, it's public domain, it's public release.
It's not a secret.
It's not a secret, so the community can understand the budget book. And so the board has been clearly informed about it.
Well, I didn't see the 25 million in the budget book. And the only other question I have is, apparently, we've been getting money back, a refund of about $3 million, two years, we got it like two fiscal years. Am I correct? $3,700,000 for one, $3 million about for the other. I just want to know what we do with the refund, Karen, Ms. McCourt.
Well, the refunds were under the other modified retrospective plan.
Yes, yes.
So the last refund received was in fiscal year 2013.
Yes.
As a settlement to the fiscal year 2012 monies. So in fiscal year 2014 and in fiscal year 2015, there will be no settlement refunds because of the change in plan technique.
Okay, I just wondered where that money went. And we're going, at least one of the options is to go back to the way we did it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Which hopefully, we all understand that. This is, this is accounting work.
And that's why we got CPA standing to my left.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews?
I absolutely appreciate all the hard work and overtime that everybody's been putting in to figure out how we got here, figuring out a way to get it out. The three options are, they're the best options that we presently have. You know, I understand why, you know, we switched to the new way we're doing health insurance and healthcare with paying as we pay, because it frees up cash flow.
Correct.
And it allows us to be better towards the money. And it came back around, and we have been working on, I'm going to use your quote, razor thin margin for all these years, that there hasn't been any room for any uptick. My personal health insurance expenses go up year in and year out. It's just, I think it's the new wave of everything. But when my personal stuff goes up, I have the option, I have to work harder and earn more money. And we're going back to funding level issues that are at our core of our problem, I believe, that when we're funded at the bottom level of the, in the state of Maryland, we've been doing so much with so little, it's eventually going to catch up. And I think now we're at the point where it's catching up and it's starting to affect people. When we start to see that the premium increases of 11.82% are coming down the pike, that's going to negate some other things that we've done in the past to help our teachers and employees, and it's just, I'm glad we have some options. I just wish there were, there's no magic pill.
Right.
There's no, there's no immediate fix, other than we have to look at our funding levels.
Right. And we have made some conscious decisions that have been fully vetted in public, that have been adopted in the board process and taken the whole way through the county process, working in collaboration with negotiations to provide raises, to keep the highly qualified staff that we have, and I might add, board members, that were at a highest level in history at 96%, the latest percentage, keeping qualified people, compensating them fairly, addressing OPEB, addressing unforeseen issues, and balancing all of that. I have been ringing the bell for the last several years about the razor-thin level of the fund balance. It's a reality. We do not have the large number of reserves to cover those issues. So the conversation is, as you heard my conversation the other night at the public hearing, very clear, and let me reiterate that for the individuals who are here who weren't there, who didn't hear it. I'm thankful for the conversation that has occurred thus far about the increase. I'm thankful for the increase above maintenance of effort. We're realizing, based upon the lagging indicator of the allocations from the state, based upon growth, but the conversation about sustainability. So when you're operating with an administrative cost of 1.5% of the budget, and we've dipped that down over the course of nine years, from 3%, 2% to 1.5% administratively thin, operating on very razor-thin reserves, where else do you go? So the conversation, I asked for more opportunity to have dialogue beyond five minutes in front of the public hearing, in various other conversations, to say, how do we solve this together? So that level of collaboration. So, you know, a number of jurisdictions, school districts do not have the authority to retain any level of reserves. They immediately have to deal with the aberrations and the anomalies through county government. It has been a consistent level of understanding that we have a modest level of reserves, and even in conversations with county government. What's modest mean? 45 million dollars minimally. But I'm going, I'm basing it upon, every time our auditors are here, I make them wiggle, but I keep pushing the issue. What is the recommended amount that a organization should have in reserves for an operating budget of $190 million? And I've said it once already, but it's important to hit. These are the people who do this for a living and save 5% of your budget. That's a lot of money that we don't have there, so it says how we're operating. But yet, compensating our individuals, ensuring that healthcare is paid for, making our contribution to OPEB, making certain the instructional program is there, having a graduation rate that's seventh highest in the state of Maryland, 91.5, but at the lowest level of funding, 24 out of 24. So it's a very efficient system. There's no disputing that. And so this anomaly this year, recognizing we need to recalibrate, so you know, expect the board to have that opportunity to have the conversations about recalibrating. So that's why I'm presenting to you 14, not in isolation, because that's just like putting a finger in the dam. It's the opportunity to be able to say, how do we adjust this, based upon accumulation of factors? And then with our best projection and our best vision, how do we prevent this from happening again? But still recognize that there are variables when you're dealing with human beings that are out of our control. As I checked, we can't predict those kinds of things. So I appreciate the outstanding comments that you're making, Mr. Matthews, because it's extremely critical to this issue in terms of razor-thin, the reserves. That's the crux of this, in addition to the overall adjustments necessary with our healthcare and how that is. I mean, I've been ringing that bell consistently. So thank you.
I did have a teacher come up to me, and she goes, Brooke, it's simple. You know why your healthcare costs keep going up? We're all working so hard. This is just a mental breakdown for some of us. And I looked at it, and I says, well, we always, you know, everybody does more than what they're supposed to. And when you do that on a daily basis, and you burn the end of that candle all the time, it does catch up with you. So I understand.
Okay, so please, and anybody in the audience, you know, in terms of policymakers, elected officials, when we make decisions in isolation, they may sound good, but you have to ask the question, for that reaction, what's going to be the equal and opposite reaction for that action? That's the physics, physics 101. For every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. We've talked for years about unfunded mandates, and everything flows locally. So I use the two examples that I cited, which are relevant and real. The shift in... The shift in providing 22 to 23 to 26-year-olds on insurance. That sounds great. It's intended to keep people with healthcare, young kids who can't get jobs. But that's increased our roles by 190 individuals. I've also shared with you examples of individuals who use that strategically as a money management issue, to say that their, their child has got a job, a full-time job, but the benefits cost too much, they were going to roll them onto their own policy for three years. That's a strategy. That's a plan. But that's not what the intent was. But that's a money management issue. I bring the Affordable Care Act up again, I'm going to bring it up in 15. That's $325,000, $335,000, $330,000 based upon the fee to, to balance it. That's an unfunded mandate that was not in our thinking as that was going through, but that's come home local. I'm not sure if every school district is aware of that. We have a level of knowledge of that. So those are two examples. So when those things come, what do we do? We have to spend somehow, but that's not a budgeted immediately. So these aberrations that I define, they happen. So the conversation has to occur at a level of, if you don't want us to have a fund balance, that's fine. But recognize, when a problem emerges, where do we go to solve that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. This is the first time in my tenure on the Board of Education that we've ever been in the red. We have always been in the black. And we have people who have been working to make sure that that happens. When we have issues, we must bring them forward immediately, openly and honestly. At the last Board of Education meeting, Dr. Marterana brought those budgetary challenges forward, and he alluded, has been alluding to those shortfalls for some time. Usually, those challenges with normal shortfalls are addressed in categorical transfers during May, and those things are utilities, weather-related costs, special education and other issues. And the 1.5 million dollars can be used to do that. We still have two months of bills which need to be paid, and we cannot pay our bills for the next two months. Just as the Board of, County Commissioners have a rainy day fund, the Board of Education should have a certain amount of rainy day funds as well. I thank the Board of County Commissioners for having a rainy day fund, to fund Springbridge Middle School after the fire, in the tune of 10 million dollars. I thank them for the maintenance effort, which is the floor and not the ceiling, and any overage that they give us over that amount. But still, we are 24 out of 24 in per pupil funding for the state of Maryland. This is something that is not good, and we have been doing more with less. Our graduation rate is 91.5, and over 95% of our staff is highly certified. And I could go on and on with our accomplishment. We still have healthcare plans, there are still catastrophic illnesses, employees are still buying brand-name pharmaceuticals, pregnancies are normal and still happen, on and on, weather conditions, utility, all those things are normal things. The key questions I have are, we must live within our budget regardless of how much the Board of County Commissioners give us. That's a fact.
Correct.
So how will we be assured that this will not happen again with overage in our healthcare? What safeguards and accountability measures will be immediately instituted? And the healthcare co-pays and pharmaceutical plans must be negotiated with the associations. You know, people think we can just change something. We cannot. It is a negotiated process. So, and it has to be an opener in the contract to do that. So I guess, I gave you about four questions and didn't give you any time to answer them. But when is the appropriate time to do the negotiating for the healthcare co-pay and the pharmaceuticals? How will we be assured that this will not happen again? What accountability measures and safeguards will be immediately instituted?
Okay, so thank you. I think that the, the crux of my conversation was the fact that all the things that we're currently doing to address the shortfall, based upon how we've defined we've gotten here, carrying that forward in 15, by virtue of placing the 6.5 million dollars in the account for healthcare, the increased amount, by adjusting the level of premiums at the level where it needs to be adjusted to, by monitoring with a level of clear focus with the systems that Tammy's put in place already to monitor, and then to go back to ensure all of that. But then, I have to throw in the human dimension. We can do all that. But those other variables that got us here could happen again, could happen again. So I can't ever say with a level of complete fullness that it's never going to happen again. We're going to do everything that we can to project that it won't, making the adjustments accordingly in 15. And then, again, it's a, it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. It's not just one effect. If we just do this, then everything will be taken care of. It's conversations with our employees, it's an educational process in terms of wellness, it's a conversation that I've had with many of our representatives, Liz Purcell-Leskin, to educate our community. I don't think if I were to pose to 10 of our, to 10 individuals off the street, define self-insurance, self-insured, what's that mean? People don't fully understand the level of insurance. They, something happens, they show a card, it gets paid for. But they need to recognize, when you're self-insured, you pay 100% when you're the organization. Remember I talked to you about keeping my empathy hat on versus my business hat? Looking at it from the vantage point of people have great needs, but also looking at it in terms of expenditures and managing that. So balancing it out with the conversations about wellness and education and conversations in the, the normal negotiations process is an opener for discussions about healthcare regarding the aspects of co-pays for prescriptions and how we translate that. I can't talk at a level of detail how that would look and feel, but the, that's through an education process. How much does it cost? But what I do know for a fact is that $5 and $10 co-pays, I've been talking about this for five-plus years, are some of the lowest in the area. I challenge anybody here who has a different healthcare plan than the school systems to stand up and tell me what your co-pays are. I've been keeping, I, I hear the rumblings, you know, in the audience. And that has a cost. That has a cost. I also can tell you that, you know, there's great consideration about making certain, we're keeping certain parts of the organization a whole. And I want you to focus again on the positives. We've done all this by keeping the benefits for our people this year, by not furloughing individuals, by keeping staff at the levels of where it's done. So, Mrs. Washington, your questions are very focused. I've provided throughout the whole presentation, the answers to your questions, how we've got here, what we're going to do to prevent this, and the monies that we're placing in the accounts, how we're going to structurally adjust, and then through a very detailed conversation, negotiations process that will begin immediately to have those discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
I sense your level of frustration, and, and I know that your frustration mirrors that of the board. And I, the frustration, I think, at least, my frustration is that we find ourselves here at all. And, and then frustration with, how do we get beyond this, as well as that it's easy when somebody looks at a snapshot, so a quick article in the paper, or, you know, someone making a statement, ah, they've got a problem. But it doesn't reflect, and I appreciate that you acknowledged that we've been asking questions, making comments about budget, about healthcare items all along and for a number of years. This is not just a, you know...
Right.
Oh, my gosh, we were asleep at the switch, how did this happen? And, and that's frustrating for me as, as well. But it's, it's something that, you know, we got elected to these positions and, and we're accustomed to people needing additional information that hopefully, we as board members are, are prepared to provide, to help them understand what's going on as we understand what's going on. It's very difficult to look at the numbers in the budget in isolation. So without that rich level of detail that we receive when we're at a board meeting or when we're asking questions, and, and I've, I've been reminded of that recently, that you hear someone make a statement about our budget and you think, well, that's, that's not accurate.
Right.
Long ago, when I first got on the board, we addressed an issue, and a parent was, was very upset with us for, for our decision on this issue. And yet, we had, we had talked about it in board meetings, it had been reported widely, and it came down to, the person basically wanted us to come knock on their door, sit at their kitchen table, and one by one across the county say, you know, let me explain what's going on. That is why we're elected, so that we hopefully represent the, the populace and ask the questions that need to be asked, so that there is the level of accountability. And certainly, if this had been a problem in the past, our yearly audits that are conducted by an outside organization...
Correct.
Would have, would have brought that to the light.
Absolutely.
We've changed a number of, of pieces of this all at one time. So the way we've paid for it, Care First came and stood at that podium, and, and the lady explained what triple option was and what the expectation was in terms of savings that we would realize. Unfortunately, in, in this instance, Care First was not accurate in their projection. Paying, paying our bills as we go, I, I recall Mr. Norris standing at the podium and saying to us that this was a, a new approach for us, this was one we were going to take...
Correct.
But that he expected that it was going to take us a year or so for this to kind of settle out, so that we would have a better understanding after year one and even better after year two. Were we allocating sufficient funds? Was this workable? Was there something we needed to change? Unfortunately, I think we're at that conversation a lot sooner than any of us anticipated us needing to be. People can elect to have surgery, people can elect to go to the doctor, a person doesn't elect to have a complicated heart attack that lands them in the hospital with multiple complications in, in February and, and those bills coming through. And, and that's, in essence, what we've opened the door to, is sort of taking as it, taking it as it comes. And I, I just think that the volatility of the healthcare market, based on their trying to navigate the Affordable Care Act and what it's going to mean for them, has hit us at a, at a challenging time. And there are pieces of it that have taken effect over time. While, yes, the 26-year-olds, people were allowed to stay on policies until they were 26, with, with the Affordable Care Act, one of the ideas was that they would bring more healthy people in to swell the population, and, and that burden would be borne by a much larger group. I, I hope that when that healthcare committee meets, they're not just looking at what's offered and, and what the possibilities are, but how this is being utilized, and, and are there changes that need to be made as a reflection of, of, is it all emergency care? Is it, is it proactive versus reactive? As Mrs. Washington very accurately pointed out, the, the Board of Commissioners, the, the County Commissioners get to impose, and from one year to the next, they may change their healthcare policy for their employees, and the next year have something completely different. We negotiate that. And we, we try to do it with an eye to the future, but it is, it, it's a negotiation. It was interesting to learn that a lot of these numbers, Ms. McCourt, are, are being factored in 18 months ahead of the time that the budget's being put into effect. The, going back to page four of the PowerPoint, you indicate that there was an increased enrollment of 77 employees. Given that we didn't hire, we didn't have 77 new positions, I, I would think it's...
Enrollment of...
Enrollment of, so it's, it's 77 new policies as people have retired...
So it's...
And maintained their insurance.
Go ahead.
We've hired new teachers to replace those people, and so it, it's not like we suddenly have 77 additional people we're paying for because we have 77 new positions on top of it. It's 77 new policies, correct?
That's absolutely correct. So that's one of the factors that makes it difficult to project out how many people will be on our plan next year. So you've got 2,100 employees, but of that, what percentage will maintain on our plan when they go to retire? What percentage, as new employees, will take our plan versus staying on with a spouse's plan?
Exactly.
Exactly. And the increased prescription usage of, of just shy of $2 million. Is that above and beyond what was already being paid? Or are you saying that our total prescription costs are just shy of $2 million?
There's an increase of $1.9 million over the calendar year ending 2012 to 2000, to calendar year 2013.
Because Blue Cross Blue Shield does theirs on a calendar year versus our fiscal year, which is another challenge that we face. The, I think that you have put forward a reasonable plan. I, I know that, as Mrs. Washington indicated, this is the first time we've ever faced a shortfall. It's also the first time in my memory, for, for many years, we received a fairly, a fairly large healthcare rebate. And those monies were used to give our employees a healthcare holiday, for our employees and our retirees. And then, the additional dollars typically were then utilized as part of our fund balance. I mean, that's one of the ways we were able to accumulate the fund balance that we had for a time.
Well, but also keep in mind, I appreciate what you said in terms of first time ever, but we've had shortfalls in the past...
Yes, sorry.
That we have been able to address through our own reserves and categorical processes. So I appreciate the comments that you both made, it's just that I've illuminated this one further because of the magnitude of it, and that we did not have the ability to solve it all internally. I've brought before you numerous years categorical transfers...
Yes.
We've had to re-transfer dollars.
And typically, we've done that in January and in May.
Yeah, so this is not like the first time. It is the first time that we've had to deal with the magnitude of this issue...
Yes.
And an opportunity to resolve it. So I'm presenting you with a problem to resolve the shortfall based upon these anomalies that we've had internally. But again, taking into account the razor-thin margins that we have in that sense. So I want to be very clear about that whole process.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. The, I, I also appreciate that you have brought forward not just the three options, but the, your recommendations for making changes to the way we're handling healthcare...
Yep.
For the future, that we may return to the, the way we had been doing it. That seems to give us a, it, it seems to give us, under the circumstances of, of funding and the, and the razor-thin margin, I, I think it's a safer way to approach this. And, you know, we tried something, and it, it's just not working out.
Well, but to keep in mind, again, I'm going to go back to the two different ways to, to solve the problem. There were many issues being presented of concern when we were operating the other way, too. You know, and in great conversations with our representatives from the associations, we go into a good faith negotiations with a certain amount of money, and at the end, we'd say we have a certain amount of money to negotiate, and then at the end, we're saying, well, surprise, we now have an additional $2.5 million because of the healthcare that wasn't, it was underutilized that year. So that frustration has continued throughout, you know, as you're, as you're trying. So I always have talked about, you know, with all of our CFOs, the conversation about with the level of precision, so that we're not over-projecting, under-projecting, all of those things, coming into a level of projection. Tammy and I have become so close in a very short period of time, having those conversations. How do you do that? And leaving that margin, you know, within that. So the one way presented a certain level of issues that always left us uncomfortable, you know, through those other processes. Let's not forget all those bigger pictures. But also, I think that it's extremely helpful to recognize today that we're not just reacting to this situation. Quite frankly, in a normal situation, we would be dealing with this, and we would be... be handling this, the categorical process, and we'd have a process for you, and it would appear, and it would proceed accordingly to the financial reconciliation of our accounts. This one is just a little larger. We've done the adjustments. I will express my level of frustration very clearly in the sense that we have that continued level of communication. My only consideration was, when did we, when was this emerging? And if I would have known in December with a level of predictivity, then I could have activated savings quicker to adjust. That's water under the bridge, but it's, for me, that's what I do all day, is ring the bell to say, how can we look at this different? And then how can we prevent it in the future? So where have we been? Where are we and where we're going? Where have we been? This is what we've done? This is where we currently are? We've got to solve the problem. It's a problem. It's not insurmountable. We have got to solve the problem. We've got to move forward in FY '15. And again, going back to you, Mrs. Washington, excellent questions with a level of precision.
Mm-hmm.
How do we prevent this from occurring again? Because I don't want to stand up here next year at this level, you know, with this, quite frankly. But if we are, we put our best foot forward to address it. Because what we're dealing with, we're not dealing with widgets. We're not dealing with predictive widgets that come down the assembly line, and everything is predictive. We're dealing with 18,000 young people who present themselves different to us every day with a level of unpredictability. We never know who's going to arrive in the school system, and that's the level of increase in terms of our IEP carriers. They have to be tended to. And what's the pressure point there? I can't selectively say we're not going to implement the IEP. You know that, Mrs. Crosby is a former special education teacher. That's a legal binding document, has to be addressed. So if that money isn't there, how do we deal with it? So all of those things and making the adjustments in the budget, so that when we're dealing with the unpredictability of human beings and human nature, I don't know what those healthcare things are going to be. We've had, Mrs. McCourt just said, $1.9 million more than last year. That's more than last year. Lot of things going on. But I always want to keep, as I've stated to you, Mrs. Allen, very clearly, you as a nurse, understand this, to lead with the empathy hat, but also recognizing, this is a business, and it's got a bottom line. So I said to you, and I, and I express my heart when I say this, that when I had those 17, or excuse me, those seven individuals who reported that they were having surgeries after spring break, part of me said, with great empathy, I had to keep that empathy hat on, but I said, can you push that off till July? You know, just from the business point of view, just thinking of bottom line. No, we can't operate like that. No, we don't have the ability to talk about pre-existing conditions when individuals come in. Remember I use the example of a family that comes in with 19 kids versus a family with two? There's no scaled rate for a family of 19 versus a family of two. It's the same rate. And there's no adjustment like a car insurance plan the next year. If you use $100,000 worth of healthcare in one year, your rates don't go up individually, like your health, like your cars do. Those things can't happen, and we can't operate in, in that manner. So we have to address them. So I want, the biggest piece, as I'm building on your questions, and it builds back to Mrs. Washington as well, the issue is here where we are, but how do we prevent it in '15 and do everything that we can to adjust the budget? And we might as well continue our conversation about '15 right now, you know, in many ways. We will do that next week. I say that with tongue-in-cheek. We, we have now moved through '15, and we're getting that to a level of precision to present to you on next Wednesday. So thank you for your very focused questions.
It, it, it is always frustrating when we can't pin down a number specifically-
Right.
... but it's also very understandable why. So we will get through this, and I do appreciate that you have provided three different options. Each has its pluses and minuses, and we will take that forward. I'm grateful that the commissioners have made time-
Right.
... to be able to have this conversation in public as a group rather than, you know, one at a time. And I, I think that's important. So to that end, that ongoing conversation, and, and we'll keep moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Everything we do has a cost. This is a business. There's no question about it. We're in the people business. No one has control over the catastrophic conditions and how nature operates. There's one person, and we know who that person is, but, you know, he's not in this We know why the shortfalls exist. We've gone over and over and over. It's all been published. It's all there for everybody to see. This is not the first time that this has been discussed. We have a problem, and we must solve it. And we have a viable plan. And the plan has three options. And personally, I think it is a great plan. The first option is nice. We can solve all our problems. However, it'll leave us with no fund balance and no healthcare reserve and no OPEB contribution. But we, how do you operate an organization as large as this without any cash flow money, without any reserves? And it's like you say, and everybody understands, and there's several business people in, in this room. Where do you go? Well, we only have one place to go, and that's the Board of County Commissioners. And we have to keep on knocking on their door. Problems exist that, you know, nobody has any control over. Option two, utilize the healthcare reserve and $1 million of the fund balance, plus the categorical transfers in, in both options. But again, it leaves us with a very low fund balance, no healthcare reserve, and we need to ask the county commissioners for a supplemental appropriation or a loan to carry us over. And the loan could be paid back in two or three years or whatever. Somewhat of a good plan, but then again, it still leaves us with a limited amount of funds to really operate with on a cash flow basis for unforeseen circumstances, unhappening. Option three, does not utilize the healthcare reserve or the fund balance. That stays intact. We do use the categorical transfers, however, 2.3 to 3 million-
Correct.
-fine. We do ask for supplemental appropriation or a loan of any way as from 3-plus million, right? With this, we maintain a current healthcare reserve. We maintain the fund balance. Our cash flow's improved. What about OPEB? Is that still no payment, even with this payment? Is that correct? Okay. So we need to understand that, too. I think these are great options. I think it's a great plan. And I think board members have been reviewing this, and I think they would ultimately agree. I want to thank the superintendent and the staff for coming up with this plan. I know it's taken days and hours working with this and with the budget situation. Mrs. McCourt, thank you very much. This board thanks you for being here on board. Fortunately, unfortunately, Mr. Norris had illness in his family, and his dad is, is very, very ill. And, and not to beat any of that to death-
Correct.
-I mean, there have been problems. And, and, but we are here to solve these problems. And like Mrs. Allen said, Mrs. Washington, Mrs. Crosby, and Mr. Matthews, Monday will, it's planned to have a work session with the Board of County Commissioners, and in a collaborative way, in a team fashion, we'll sit down, work through the problem, go through these options, and have conversation, and we will solve this problem.
Right.
And like Mrs. Allen says, we will move forward. We will solve this, and in the appropriate Dr. Mariano, I'll leave the last word for you before I call for a motion-
Right.
... and have a vote on this. But board members, now remember, we are going to vote on the entire plan, all the options to take forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Everybody understands that?
Mm-hmm.
It's got to have further conversation. Thank you for the last word. I appreciate it. I want to commend all of our staff members who are in the audience. We have been communicating throughout the district on a regular basis at the emergence of this issue. They have been the ones who've cut back their accounts, have monitored the freeze, but also to present and provide the, the necessary strategies and programs and processes to ensure with fidelity our instructional program and maintain it with integrity. Every one of the directors in here, every one of the supervisors, every one of the, obviously, our deputy and our assistant superintendent have been working on this at the highest level of priority. I'm going back to Mrs. Washington's comments. There are some problems that are, that we've had to deal with in the past, such as these, but we've had the ability to solve within. This one's larger, but through diligent effort of sitting down and exploring every possible creative, innovative venue, and still providing a safe environment for our young people in a highly qualified instructional program, have been executed. And I also want you to, to understand before you adopt this and continue to challenge the thought process, the bigger picture issue, I think I've said it three times, that's why I'm repeating myself for emphasis, is that to address 14 is one-pronged. You have to look at 15. And I think Mr. Clements will attest to this. Our first conversations were, what is the bearing on 15 as a result of this? And there are significant bearing, but with a certain level of inherent values that we maintain the integrity of our school district and maintain that high level of performance, again, those three Ps, performance, programs, and people, maintaining what needs to occur. So I thank you for your, your diligence, your due diligence, your vetting, your questioning, and your detail of level. But the piece is, I want to acknowledge for the community's purpose, I have presented you three options to solve the problem. The problem will be solved. We are moving on to 15. But the conversation has to occur with the, our funding agent, because they're a major piece in all of this. And so therefore, anybody who works with me knows that if there's a problem, don't come to me with a problem without three solutions. So to our representatives on the association, true to form, we have presented three solutions to this problem. Each one has a set of concerns. So I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for taking time out of your ordinary schedules as far as the board schedule, the ordinary schedule that we have set for you, to make this a priority. And we have other business that needs to occur as well. So thank you for your time, sir.
Okay, board members, we need a motion to recommend the options to resolve the FY 2014 budgetary issues and submit to the Board of County Commissioners. Do we have a motion?
I move that the board approve the recommended options to resolve the FY 2014 budgetary issues and submit them to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Abstain.
All right. We have one abstention. The ayes have it. Madam Secretary, please make the proper notation in a minute. Thank you. Board members, we do have an executive session at the end of this meeting. Please keep that in mind. The next-
Actually, we need a motion to enter into executive session.
Okay. The next board meeting will be, the regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 30th, 2014, at 1:00 PM, because we have a work session on the FY 2015 budget at 1:00 PM. I believe that's scheduled for April 30th. Okay? Mrs. Allen, will you give us a motion so the board can enter into executive session?
I'll ask Mr. Matthews to do that, please.
I move to move into executive session following the regular meeting to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code, Article, Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
All right. We have a motion to enter the executive session. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. The executive session will begin immediately after the adjournment of this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.